I'm sorry.
I don't know what I'm saying.
Well, uh, Rick Gass, Commissioner Dawson Fields, make the prayer.
Uh, if you might get your prayer going for me. No, no, no. Oh, that's great. Well, we thank you for the day and thank you for the chance of another day, Lord, just to, uh, do better and make up what we did wrong yesterday and the days before. But we actually been with us through this meeting, uh, helps make, uh, justice decisions and just votes and, uh, you know, help us to, uh, just do the right thing, Lord, no matter what it is, uh, even if it's not what we want, just have to do the right thing, uh, to help everybody out and help the people, uh, Lord. We ask you forgive us of our sins, Lord, and, uh, forgive our shortcomings. You know the prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I recognize Commissioner Hannah Stacey, ladies and the ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will make the order and, uh, roll the hour.
Mr. Chairman, we have 21 commissioners for you.
Uh, we'll do the conflict diventures next.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Those of you who acknowledge you have an indirect conflict diventure named by Jeff Barrett, do you acknowledge that indirect conflict diventures for all actions and purposes of this meeting?
I do.
That the record reflects with Mr. Barrett in time of self.
Commendations, recognitions, statements.
I'd recognize Gary Merle.
Nobody read it after you said that.
Public service commendation to Gary Merle, November 25th, 2019. Whereas with public service, service records spanning over four years, Gary began his career as a member of the Hawkins County Rescue Squad in 1977. Became a volunteer firefighter, serving with Rogersville and Scriverville Volunteer Fire Department, and EMT with Hawkins County EMS, a member of the Hawkins County Hazmat Team, as well as patrol officer and narcotics detective with Hawkins County Sheriff's Department, and was named EMA Director of Hawkins County in 2007. And whereas through his career, he has obtained numerous certificates and awards, and most recently awarded the Certified Emergency Management Professional Award. And whereas in John 1513, Jesus stated, "With greater love hath no man than this, that a man lay down his life for his friends." It is with great honor that we pay tribute for the selfless dedication of a true public servant, Mr. Gary Merle. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of Hawkins County Mayor Jim Lee, the County Commission, elected officials and employees of our great county, Gary Merle is collectively recognized and honored for his tireless public service intended to the citizens of Hawkins County this 25th day of November in the year of our Lord 2019. We send that. Well, I'm sure we have a little something additional special for Mr. Merle. There's not too many things that, uh, an individual that's dedicated their entire life to public service that you can just go and pull something off the shelf or order from Amazon. So, uh, in honor of your many years of dedication on behalf of all elected officials and employees of our great county, and most importantly, the citizens of Hawkins County, I present to you a special memento of our appreciation that is as unique as your service. Bobby Merritt, who is a Hawkins County artisan, was commissioned to create a work of art symbolizing your selfless dedication.
Ready?
Yes, sir. The center of this stained glass window signifies the continued fruitfulness of your service and its impact on nurturing future generations and leading by public service example. Surrounding the center image are the symbolic thin lines with corresponding colors for each department in which you have served. The imagery represents the willingness of brave men and women who protect and serve our country and communities by standing between chaos and order, peril and safety. It unites as a common thread the brotherhood of all those willing to serve their fellow man. Gary, you've inspired a generation of people to serve our community with courage and power for which we are all thankful. Therefore, it is with great honor that I present this special gift to you, Gary Merle, for your lifetime of service and dedication to the people of Hawkins County.
There's what it looks like. Sorry.
I'm going to recognize, uh, Ms. Kathy Christian and Gary Brady have asked me to address the Commissioner.
I thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Gary Brady. I've been a resident of Hawkins County since 1975. Some months ago, I stood before this board and asked you to pass a resolution opposing valid health plans to downgrade Houston Valley Hospital's DQ Level One Trauma Center, and also to oppose the plan to close the Cancer Infusion Center at Allendale. I'm proud to say that this Board of Commissioners stepped up and unanimously passed a resolution opposing all three plans. Unfortunately, Valid Health, being the medical monopoly they are, callously ignored the will of the people and shoved their changes down our collective throats. All three services were downgraded or closed to the detriment of the citizens in this county, as well as the entire region. In spite of these setbacks, a group of dedicated citizens called the Rally for the Valley Group has continued to engage in a peaceful protest outside Houston Valley Hospital. This peaceful protest group has manned its protest site 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for the past 208 consecutive days. We have actively engaged our federal, state, and local elected officials seeking redress for the harm Valid Health has unleashed on the citizens of our region. A region, by the way, that is roughly the size of the state of New Jersey and encompasses approximately 1.2 million people. Despite presenting clear, convincing, and verifiable evidence that the disadvantages resulting from the COPA agreement or the Certificate of Public Need far outweighed any advantages resulting from a reduction in competition, the state oversight authorities have failed to discharge their lawful duties and only Valid Health accountable for their monopolistic practices. In fact, they have become complicit in ensuring that Valid Health can exercise its monopolistic muscle as they please, and often to the detriment of the citizens of our region. I'm sure that it comes as no surprise to you that the exercise of our constitutional rights of free speech and peaceful assembly has often come under attack. Our group, and especially our leader Danny Cook, has become the lightning rod for vicious, slanderous, threatening emails, letters, and social media attacks disparaging the sincerity of our motivations and actions. I'm sure that all of you are aware that this past Tuesday, the Kingsport Board of Mayor and Alderman voted on and passed on second and final reading a city ordinance specifically designed to evict us from a strip of grass on the public right of way which we have occupied since May of this year. As it currently stands, unless something drastic change, changes, we must vacate our spot one week, one week from this coming Friday, or we will face fines. Valid Health has also attempted to have us removed from our current location. Recently, the head of security for Valid Health filed felony charges. That's right, felony charges that, that we had killed the grass and that we are, where we are assembled, and that we had dug, and I quote, "ditches" to stop water runoff from the sidewalks from entering our protest site. Both charges were investigated by the Kingsport Police Department and subsequently ruled to be without foundation or merit. We have been drenched at 4:00 in the morning by the, quote, "accidental initiation" of the sprinkler systems at our protest site. This has happened on at least three occasions. We have been accused of impeding traffic flow, both on the roadway and the sidewalks. Yet when we go to the Kingsport Police Department to get copies of the complaints, we are told that no such complaints have been filed. We have been maligned and misrepresented by the local newspaper while being denied the opportunity to rebut these misrepresentations in print or via letters to the editor. I could go on, but I believe you get the picture. These are the kind of things that constitute a concerted effort to suppress the First Amendment rights of our peaceful protesters. That being said, I come to the reason why I stand before this Board of Commissioners tonight. On behalf of the citizens of Hawkins County and the citizens of the entire Valid Health coverage area, I ask this board to once again step up and assist us in our fight to preserve reasonable access to quality health care at affordable prices. At this point, you may be asking yourselves, just how do we, as a Board of Commissioners, provide the kind of support you need? Well, here's how. We, the people, are asking you to once again pass a resolution regarding health care in our region. The resolution we are seeking would authorize public hearings on the matter of establishing a hospital authority that will oversee and manage how health care is delivered to all citizens affected by the Valid Health monopoly. It is abundantly clear to those of us involved in the protest at the, against Valid Health that this is the last avenue left open to the people if they are to have any redress for legitimate grievances arising out of Valid Health's exercise of their monopolistic muscle. However, let me clearly state that I am not, I am not requesting any action by the Board of Commissioners tonight with regard to the passage of any resolution on our behalf. I fully understand that before any such resolution can be even considered, both the Commissioners and the citizens must inform themselves of the requirements necessary for establishment of a hospital authority. In order to expedite the learning curve for both groups, I am announcing a called public meeting for the express purpose of exploring the requirements that must be met in order to establish a hospital authority for our region. Such public meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, December the 5th, 2019, and will be conducted at the Rogersville Houston Electric Facility, starting at 6:00 P.M. In the next few days, each Commissioner will receive an invitation via email to attend this meeting. However, since I could find no email address for Commissioner Barrett, I will now publicly extend a personal invitation to you to attend, sir.
Thank you very much.
As Commissioners, you need to be aware that a similar invitation to attend this meeting will also be extended to the county Commissioners, county mayors, and county attorneys of Sullivan, Green, Hancock, and Hamlin Counties as applicable. Also, it is our intent to issue a public notice inviting all interested citizens to attend as well. If there are others that you feel need to attend this meeting, by all means invite them. Our goal is to involve as many citizens and elected officials as would like to participate. I cannot emphasize enough the importance of your attendance at this meeting. If the citizens of this region are to have a fair shot at accessing quality health care at affordable rates, the establishment of a hospital authority appears to be the only reasonable way that that can happen. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I solicit your assistance, uh, in holding Valid Health accountable for their monopolistic practices. If anyone has questions in the, in the interest of time, I would suggest that perhaps you put them in the form of an email. I will leave my email address with you, and you can send those to me, and we will, uh, email answers back to any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
And just the, the one thing that I wanted to say, I'm Kathy Christian, I live in Churchill, and I just wanted to tell you how proud I am of you guys for stepping up. Um, I am, uh, one of those people that have slept outside of the hospital for 208 days. Missed a couple of days for birthdays and that type of thing, but, um, I'm absolutely committed to my community, um, and I'm very proud to say also that a good number of the people who are the core group of Rally for the Valley are from Hawkins County, and we've got a few of them here. Uh, we're all Hawkins County residents, and because of the, the effect that what is happening has on our community, um, Churchill and, you know, the, the time constraints. And last month, we heard, uh, Dr. Blaine Jones talk about the challenges that they face because of what Valid is doing. Um, and so I just wanted to let you know that, um, Hawkins County residents have also stepped up to the plate, um, to do what we can do to make sure that we have, um, quality health care in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Is any other commendations or records? Would not we move on to office reports and committee reports? We still have a couple items need to be read in the minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Please, into the minutes. Uh, appointment to list delinquent tax attorney in accordance with TCA 6752404. I hereby appoint James L. Pointe, a law firm attorney in East D.C., Rockland, Tennessee, to be the delinquent tax attorney for Hawkins County for a period of 12 months, today 11, 14, 19, time to James L. Chance trustee. And also an order, reappointment of James R. Jones as Commissioner of the Lakeview Utility District of Hawkins County, Tennessee, with a term commencing December 20, 2019, and ending midnight on the last day of December 19, 2023. Whereas the Commissioners of the Lakeview Utility District of Hawkins County, Tennessee, have under the seal of the Board of Commissioners certified and listed three nominees in order of preference to fill the office of Commissioner of the Lakeview Utility District of Hawkins County, Tennessee, with a term commencing December 20, 2019, expiring at midnight on the last day of December 19, 2023, to be General Lee County Mayor of Hawkins County as required by TCA 782307. Now therefore, I, General Lee County Mayor of Hawkins County, Tennessee, hereby order and reappoint James R. Jones as the Commissioner of the Lakeview Utility District of Hawkins County, Tennessee, with a term of office commencing December 20, 2095. And, that's obviously a mispronounced, uh, and expiring as 2019, and expiring at midnight on the last day of December 19, 2023, with all the rights, duties, and obligations up pending there too this 25th day of November, 2019, as I'm General Lee County Mayor.
Is there any other office reports, committee reports? If not, we'll move on to the next item, on agenda's approval of events.
Motion by Commissioner Fields, is her second.
Second.
Second by?
John Gutt. John Gutt.
Mr. Smith. Is any discussion? If not, all votes.
21, yes.
We'll move on to resolutions, uh...
Mr. Chairman, could I be recognized, Commissioner? I have a parliamentary inquiry. In the rules of order for the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners adopted in 1982, and which we've been abiding by ever since, Article 7 on page 6 states, "Any rules of order herein may be suspended or amended by the affirmative vote of 21 members." As you know, Mr. Charles Curtis with CTAAS came before us in a procedural training session in this very room, replied to a question posed by Commissioner Houseright concerning the aforementioned rule. Mr. Curtis stated that requiring 100% affirmation was unreasonable and could be contested in local chance record. Additionally, Mr. Curtis distributed the document entitled "Items to Consider for Local Rules." If anybody needs to see that, I've got one with me. Um, number 17 of his CTAAS recommendations is to establish a method to amend your local rules. This is usually accomplished by requiring a two-third vote to amend. Now, having done a thorough review of all amendments made to the rules since 1982, they've each passed by the required two-thirds, two-thirds majority at the minimum. And therefore, Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend Article 7 on page 6 of the 1982 rules to state, "Any rules of order herein may be suspended or amended by the affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members." Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Whit, and you reread that motion.
I'll reread it. I move that we amend Article 7 on page 6 of the 1982 rules to state, "Any rules of order herein may be suspended or amended by the affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members." That's changing it from a full 21 required.
I would further add to that, that, uh, I've looked into this issue some time ago when it was coming up, and I've heard of the CTAAS on it as well, and these rules that were acted by a previous commission are not totally bound on this commission. You can change it, modify it, or alter it, and it's fit by a majority vote. So, in effect, this amendment could pass by a majority vote.
Is there discussion?
Yeah, uh, you might have said this, Commissioner DeWitt, I'm sorry if you did. Uh, the, uh, what's, what's definitely what we're doing at night? I mean, uh, when we're doing out of order stuff, aren't we doing two-thirds anyway, or?
Well, we've, we've been doing, rules of order or procedures, um, can encompass a lot of things. Um, but, as I said, Article 7 says that it takes 21 members to do that. Mr. Curtis said that that is probably, would probably not stand up. Uh, I didn't read exactly what he said. Establish a method to amend your local rules. This is usually accomplished by requiring a two-third vote to amend, and he has said that that, uh, a 21, a full 21 vote would probably not stand up in chance record.
So what it says right now is we have to have a full 21?
Yes, sir.
That we're going to amend it to two-thirds?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question. Is there a reason that you brought this up now, kind of out of order rather than, as a formal?
I've, I've been working on trying to get these, these, this suggestions, uh, incorporated into, into what we do for a long time, I mean, from the very first meeting. So it's not just been brought up just now. Yes, I did just voice it just now, but, uh, these 1982 rules, and if you read through them, it requires you to stand up, to get attention. It requires you to do a lot of things that are totally outdated. And this one, I felt like was the most important because what we're doing now is requiring 21. If we, if we do that and somebody objects, then we may find ourselves in court.
Were you voting on this, uh?
Yes.
I want to make a motion to table until next month, till we get more information on it. Cause I mean, we're getting blindsided with this, and I think we needed this table up till next month, bring it back in a resolution.
Have you read the 1982 rules, Mr. Williams?
I hear what you said, but I'm still making a motion to table it till next month.
And we all, we all have a copy of the 1982 rules of order that everybody should be familiar with.
Motion's been made to table. It's a privileged motion, is her second.
My second.
Motion's made and second. No, no further, it cuts off discussion unless Commissioner DeWitt. You can have the last chance to, if you have anything else you want to say on it.
I don't have anything to say other than what I've already said. The 1982 rules have, have been in place. Uh, they are outdated and need to be changed. And, you know, putting it off month after month after month is not going to do us any good. Yep. Go ahead and say that, Commissioner Matt.
Well, we, Mr. Chairman, we really aren't supposed to have any other discussion other than Mr. DeWitt, uh, will, uh...
What more can we go say? What, John was going to say?
I mean, if it's permissible, if everybody on the board, if there's no objections, I, I'll recognize this committee's, if there's no objection.
I've got an objection. I didn't make a motion.
Okay. We're going to vote. We're going to vote.
You're reading by our own voice vote.
Okay.
This is a vote to table?
Yes.
To table. Yes, tables, no, to not table.
Till next one.
Mr. Powell's?
Yes.
Nancy Barker?
No.
Jeff Barrett?
Yes.
Rick Rutter?
Yes.
George Friedwell?
Yes.
Larry Quants?
Yes.
Linda Davis?
Yes.
Mark DeWitt?
No.
Bob Edens?
No.
Dawson Fields?
No.
Keith Gibson?
No.
Valerie Goins?
I don't know. I'm the same here.
Yes. Mike Correll?
Yes.
Charles Housewright?
Yes.
Raymond Jesse?
Yes.
Tom Kern?
No.
John Metz?
No.
Anna Speaks?
Yes.
Donnie Towery?
Yes.
Charles Thacker?
Yes.
Jennifer Trent?
Yes.
Fourteen, yes.
Mr. Chairman, just one suggestion. If these rules need to be changed and going to go through it, probably go through it, change the law one time.
Yes, I've tried to do that, Commissioner Powell.
I think that there's several things that needs to be addressed on those rules themselves, you know. We, uh, I first I've heard that Commissioner DeWitt, I mean, if we wanna change the law, we change the law one time.
Okay, well, you know, it's probably a function of the personnel committee, Commissioner Powell, which we don't have at this point, so it's kinda hard to do that.
Chairman, I have orders, we need, we want.
Okay, we're right back to resolution number one. Recognize Commissioner Thacker.
Mr. Chairman, County Commission, ladies and gentlemen. The Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman of the members of Hoppins County Board of Commissioners and Rapidly Commission met the twenty-fifth day of November two thousand nineteen. Resolution and Reverend commending rule of order of Chairman of the Commission responsible for appointing committees. Whereas until September two thousand eighteen, the County Mayor had all, had always presided as Chairman of the Board of Commissioners to rule of order, where the Board of Commissioners state that the Chairman would appoint standing committees made of the County Commissioners as members. And whereas Resolution two thousand eighteen oh nine oh one passed September twenty-four two thousand eighteen, elected Commissioner as Chairman instead of the County Mayor, Jim Lee, said Resolution was meant to have the County Mayor to select the committees for the County Commission. Motion was made by Commissioner John Metz and seconded by Dawson Fields. And whereas it is the desire of some commissioners to put the responsibility of the committee performance back to the Chairman of the Commission. Therefore, a big resolve that the rule of order of the Board of Educat- uh, Commissioners be amended to read as follows. The Chairman of the Commission will be responsible for appointing the standing committees of the Commission. Mr. Chairman, I so.
Motion by Commissioner Thacker. Is there second? Second by Commissioner Powell. I'm sorry that I. Second by Commissioner Speaks, I was seeing the board, I'm sorry. Uh, discussion, Mr. Reeves.
So after what Commissioner DeWitt read, this has to go by all twenty-one votes? Yeah, this will be by a majority vote, because we can amend those rules by majority vote because we're not bound by it, if we wanna change it.
We haven't changed it, so it's still twenty-one.
Yeah, I disagree with that, because if we, if we move to change something, then we modify that procedure, and we can do so by a majority vote.
We haven't modified the procedure.
We haven't modified the procedure.
You're voting on this resolution, right?
You, you're modifying it when you try to change one of the rules.
It didn't get changed.
So with that being, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. DeWitt.
I'm still confused.
Commissioner Fields? Uh, well, I wanna add on to Commissioner Eaton's a little bit there. If you're going by Robert's order, this is gonna have to be passed by twenty-one, right, right?
Order, Mr. Phillips, no, sent to the majority.
Just to the majority.
Okay, um, that's my, anyway, I'm just going off what my thought was going down, what I go says twenty-one, right?
No, just to the majority.
No, what Mark, what Commissioner DeWitt said, what I go says twenty-one of us had to do this. No matter who has it been ordered, no, the rules of order say twenty-one of us have to do it. Like, okay, that's all I have, I just wanna make sure that that was clear. Um, okay, me personally, and this is just my opinion, my opinion only, um, no matter who. No matter, no, no matter who we put this in, uh, as to pick these committees, I personally think that something should be put in place, a board or something, so that one person does not pick the committees for everybody, right? Uh, and this is personal opinion, you know, that we could put this to the personnel committee, but you put it to any committee we want to, we can start another pick if we want to, but so that, you know, seven people are a committee, not one person, picks who's gonna be on the floor. Uh, but. Anyone feel that?
Uh, I was just going to simply say, for C task recommends two-thirds. Uh, Robert's rules of order recommends two-thirds to change the parliamentary rules. And the reason C task recommends two-thirds is, the intent is that someone go along with sunshine, sunshine laws. Uh, so, uh, obviously, there's a moral expectation that's going to rule the law and avoid complete chaos, and if we can just change what we wanna change to suit our particular preference at the moment, and it just takes a simple majority, then can't bar the door, because baby, I've got a lot of things gonna come. So, with that said, if it's intended, sunshine laws intended for the public's business to be done in the open, uh, Commissioners are meeting on weekends and evenings and quote-unquote electing a members of their group to contact Commissioners for the purpose of swaying votes. I actually received a phone call and a completed affidavit of a meeting that Commissioners had on August twenty-first, twenty-first, and that Commissioner told me, I guess I was elected to call and contact you, and it was concerning wheel tax. So, and if we, uh, well, it's also evident that when we have committees, meetings, and nobody talks during the whole thing, but they meet out in the parking lot and talk, and then all of a sudden, next month, things have congregated and come together in, in a absolutely ridiculous fashion, so, uh, backroom manipulative mafia-style politics is utterly repulsive and shameful. So, if you want these parliamentary rules to inhibit those actions, then we should have acted to ensure that two-thirds majority would be needed to revise rules. So, now you're saying just a simple majority. So, don't say a word to me when I come back next month for several, several amendments, if it just takes a simple majority. If it's gonna be hijack, then I can play the only thing. And when, when a Commissioner calls me and said, we met this weekend, and I guess they elected me to call you and talk to you. That's what's going on, folks. All this backroom trash going on, it's consistent, it's going on all the time. And some of you aren't in the click or in the know. I never get a phone call. Some people hate me, that's okay, I'm all right with that, that you don't call me. But you've at least called me and told me exactly who met, what you talked about, and you were elected to do it. I'm not gonna divulge who it is that did it, but I have the affidavit prepared, and I am prepared to turn it over to a chance record. So this stuff has got to stop. It is beyond repulsive and ridiculous. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Mr. Barrett? Mr. DeWitt, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to verify what Commissioner Metz was saying. Uh, I've got, uh, text messages, and I've got printouts of that text message that when we were trying to get the salary plan in place, there were certain people offering me certain things for votes, for, uh, if, if certain things didn't happen, they would vote for the salary plan. So I, along with Mr. Metz, have written proof of that. I'm not gonna divulge who it is, but it's, it's here in my hand, so that's all I've got to say.
We've just got to look here again. Mr. Barrett?
Well, I'm not sure if, uh, uh, Ms. Davis can answer this question. I'm just curious, a year ago, when the Commission voted to, uh, give the authority of the committee assignments to Mr. Lee, I wonder if Ms. Davis could go back and look and see what the vote tally was for that, if it was a majority?
I can get from the office, Mr. Barrett, but, uh, Mr. Commissioner Metz seems I haven't.
It was fifteen firmies. Cause I knew that question would be asked.
And that's why I said that I went back and looked at all, all the procedural votes, and they were all at least two votes, that, that many.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Correll?
Oh, yes. Uh, uh, owner remarks that's been made, I mean, I guess I'm the one that hates to be sitting here getting threatened by Commissioners, I mean, if you're gonna file it, just file it, cause I mean, we all, we all probably have something to, uh, file. Cause I mean, I can tell you right now, there's certain ones that I've talked to too, that's been about the same way, so. So, I mean, we're gonna file, I mean, quit talking back, quit coming to the meeting threatening, just file. And with that said, I've called question.
Question's in call for, is any objections to the question, if you don't mind?
I'm just thinking, uh, is there, and this is a little question for Mr. Phillips. If this, if this, uh, committee thing goes one way or the other, you know, and it don't, it does not go through tonight, we need our committees, our county needs to be running. Can, is there some kind of temporary policy that we can put in, that we can have meetings and do this and settle, you know, if something goes awry here?
Well, but.
Could we live the way it was, the people that was on from last year until something?
The problem was, normally that'd be the case anyway, but y'all passed, I think it was September meeting or October one, you passed a amendment to a resolution that said the old committee members can serve until the October meeting. So you knocked that out when you did that, and of course, October meeting, the new committee members didn't pass it. So, if we don't have new committees tonight, then you all couldn't pass a resolution to extend, to let the old committee members continue to meet until new ones are elected, or something all over that line.
So, is that something that I need to wait and see what happens?
Yes.
Okay, I got you.
Me?
I just, we gotta, we gotta operate, guys gotta run.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna be out of order as Chairman, I, I have some things I'd like to say. You know, we got, we got.
Chair.
We got, I'm not speaking for or against anything, Mr. DeWitt, please.
You cannot argue anything.
I'm not arguing anything, okay? Let me just say what I've got to say today, if I get out of order, then somebody can call me out of order, okay?
Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Phillips, if I get out of order, you call me out of order. I have a right to say, listen, this is what I wanna, I wanna say. We have gotta do something to bring unity back to this commission. And I know of no other fairer way, it take a little while, but I've suggested, uh, this, and, and I've asked because I wanted to know. I've asked a few people, I, I didn't go no farther with it, but, and I asked the committee here tonight. If all twenty-one of us vote on these committees, what would be more fairer than that? If we take it district by district? You got three people in each district. It'll take a little while to get it done. But if it won't be one person, it'll be a, a, a selection as a vote. And I have no, I have nothing to force wanting any power, because if this is put on me, I'm gonna make a bunch of people mad. And, you know, but somebody's gonna have to, we're gonna have to have some committees. And if, if this passes, I won't suggest that all twenty-one of us, uh, vote on these committees. And we go, and I don't know if anything would be more fairer than that.
Well, I know we called for question, but while we're doing all this, we're handling businesses in our community that's costing us tax revenue. So as long as we keep, we've already voted on this once, we voted down, we agreed the mayor would make the appointments, and I guess because some people didn't get the job, now we're doing the same thing over again. So why are we going back? It's like a child who goes to the dad and says, can I do this? And you say no, so then you go to mom and ask her to do it. So, you know, um, we, we have a business that has, um, right now, if this passes tonight, they'll be January before they can get a license, and that's ridiculous. We're losing tax income by doing this, so, you know.
I've got a question for Mr. Phillips, sorry. Okay, we're. Mr. Housewright? Mr. Phillips? Uh, would you care to kinda clarify, I went, we've all been to a couple of places, C task, like Commissioner DeWitt said, twenty-one votes to change the law, okay? You're saying two-thirds, then the majority?
Yeah, and I talked to C task lawyers too, so I wanna make sure everybody understands that. Yeah, what they say is that because this was passed by a previous commission, and not this one, if we want to change it, we can change it. And we operate by state law with a majority of eleven unless state law says otherwise. Now that's what C task told me.
I was the one that asked my very first probably.
I talked to C task lawyer, not to the.
Sorry, well, he asked the lawyers one, last year, the first class or something, and he said it took twenty-one, like Commissioner DeWitt, to change it. So do we need to go by majority, two-thirds? Like you said, we've been going, operating two-thirds, what do you?
Well, we've changed them before, there's no question about it. What I was told, and when you think about it now, remember, state law says majority of the Commissioners can conduct any business and pass what they want passed along good legal. Okay, so if, if a previous commission set up these rules, and we wanna change it, modify it, whatever, then according to what the C task lawyers I talked to, they said that you can change that by majority because that's what the state law says of majority. Now you can still keep them if you want to, but if you wanna change them, you change them by majority rule because that's what state law says you operate under unless it says otherwise.
We didn't change. Commissioner Trent?
This is from Mr. Phillips. Mr. Phillips, did you not say that if any of this falls away, that we can go back, revert back to the old committees for the time being? Did you not say that?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, sir.
Did I not say what?
If, if there's a problem tonight, we can make a motion to revert back to the old committees in order to have committees in place.
Yes, and if we don't pass the committees tonight, yes, yes. Because if you don't, we can't pass.
That's right, thank you.
We're ready to vote.
So, yeah, so I just like to, Mr. Kern, I just wrapped in, sorry, were y'all asking us to vote on? Twenty-one people gotta do something, like Mr. DeWitt said, or y'all asking us to vote for two?
Vote on the resolution is what we're doing.
I know that, but we've got two different laws, we got, we got one thing saying one thing, and we got one thing saying another. I had no clue about the twenty-one, you know.
There's actually three different options, there's twenty-one, and two-thirds, and there's eleven. Well, if that's, that's.
Mr. Smith? If, since we have the nineteen eighty-two rules and regulations, and this class of Commissioners have made amendments to this since we've been in office. So we've acknowledged that we're operating under these rules and regulations.
so we've acknowledged that we're operating under these rules and regulations. If not, why would we have amended them twice since this very class of commission has been in office? So, I would think if we've actually amended the nineteen eighty-two rules and regulations twice under this commission, are you now saying we're not gonna operate by them? See, there's just so much confusion. I mean, we've acknowledged that that's what we're going by.
Mr. Taylor, you raise your hand.
Walk through the order, say, Mr. DeWitt, that you'll be recognized and hold your spoken there. And if we're gonna follow the rules and order, I think we ought to be very respectful of our chairman and speak, act with permission, and you're just talking and talking about it.
Mr. Taylor, you're singling me out amongst several that have done something.
I agree, but you're the last one that's done it and need that one copy.
Mr. Phillips?
I'm just gonna make all of you mad at one of our swoopers and say that if the mayor had stood up and stepped up and chaired this commission like he should have, we wouldn't be having these bickerings for a year now.
Okay, we named it.
Explain "should be."
Should be?
Explain why it should be.
What else did... No, she mentioned him by name, by all the tools he has, opportunity to address that, how she called him by name.
I think there's been many times, I know we were all along the campaign trail together, and I don't think that there was ever a time that I heard you say that you would not be chairing the commission, and as it even states in here, the county mayor had always presided as chairman of the board of commissioners.
Had always. Things are different now. They don't run by your rules.
No, but it's been going real well.
You don't make the rules.
Well, neither do you.
We need to leave on.
Neither do you.
We're gonna vote on this resolution.
That's why he's not chairman.
Yes, to vote.
We'll just have to change your vote by hand, Mr. Barrett. It won't let us go by any. We will change your vote by hand.
Okay, does everybody vote? Please vote.
Nine yes, eight no, three abstain, and Commissioner Barrett, your vote?
My vote is yes. I'm in favor of the resolution.
What, your original vote?
I read my vote.
Okay, so it would be ten yes, seven no, three abstain, and that's it.
Now, may I suggest we go ahead and talk to me, we've got to have a beer board in place. We need that in place tonight.
Next item, resolution number two. Mr. Gurrell?
Chairman, after talking to the county attorney and the sheriff, I need to pull this resolution before I get back next month.
Next item? Next item is resolution number three. Mr. DeWitt?
I guess I'm properly recognized. To the Honorable Melville, Melville State, okay, that needs to be changed. To the Honorable Rick Riller Chairman, and members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session, met this twenty-fifth day of November twenty nineteen. Resolution in reference approval of removing the P endorsement from technician two job description for recycle center for the Hawkins County classification factor ranking schedule. Whereas, resolution twenty seventeen eleven oh six established a job description for recycle technician one and recycle technician two, the job description for recycle technician two read as follows. Recycle technician two, classification four ten, salary grade four, and will require the employee to have TCI training and a CDL license with P endorsement. This was a new classification. The P endorsement is required to transport more than fifteen passengers in a vehicle. Whereas, on September thirty of twenty nineteen, personnel committee met, voted to remove the P endorsement from the job description as the recycle center is not having community service workers and are only getting inmates from Hawkins County Jail as workers. They're no longer driving a fifteen-passenger vehicle to pick up litter. Now, therefore, be resolved that the job description for the recycle center technician two be amended to remove the P endorsement from the description and update the Hawkins County classification factor ranking schedule. The job description should now read recycle technician two, classification four ten, salary grade four, and will require the employee to have TCI training and a CDL license. Mr. Chairman, I submit.
Motion by Mr. DeWitt. Second by Mr. Barker. Discussion, Mr. Barrett?
Just one quick question. Does the recycling center department, do they still have a fifteen-passenger vehicle assigned to their department?
I can't answer that. Solid wish, cheers.
I don't have an answer to either.
Okay, we'll understand this resolution right, correctly. If we do have it, then there'd be nobody qualified to drive it?
As long as it doesn't have passengers in it. I'm sorry.
That has to be fifteen passengers in it though, correct?
Correct, no? Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Phillips, pretty much in line with Commissioner Barrett, I think, I don't know if we have a bus or not. If we do have it, or if we don't have it, if we get another one, are we messing something up? Do we have to, do they have to go back, well, we have to change this back to having to have the P if we do get another bus? Or are we gonna leave the law if we do get one, or... I guess somebody has a bad bus or not anymore, though.
Mayor says we have one, but it's not operational at this time.
Can I comment?
Sure.
Okay, the fifteen passenger was only necessary before we were using help from Ronnie Stewart. The reason they want that P endorsement off of there is because it's just an additional hoop they have to jump through to get a raise. And to jump through that hoop, and it being unnecessary, the personnel committee agreed that this was the thing to do.
Well, we're not, well, so we're not gonna mess them up, the raise wise, though. We won't, that's not gonna mess anybody's money apart.
If we don't pass this.
Mr. Gurrell? And Commissioner Al, someone can help me on this. But if I ain't mistaken, when they got the P, they had to take some kind of training to get a raise with the P. So, are you taking that raise back from them because they got the P? Or are we still leaving with that raise also? Because I'm pretty sure they had training classes at the bus shop, and they got a raise for the training.
Personnel can, I'm sorry, can I speak?
Your answer, he's asking the questions, I asked...
Well, he asked, Mr. Al, he's gonna ask.
The raises will stay the same from what Commissioner DeWitt...
The personnel committee decided right at the get-go that we were, when we were in this new salary range, that nobody would get hurt, nobody would have any money taken away from them. So, nobody has, not requiring this P is not gonna, not gonna take raises away from anyone.
So, even though they got the P, they still get to keep their money?
Yes.
So, how are you gonna justify for the other employees that don't have the P that raise they got for not having a P?
They're on the salary scale.
So, if we get another bus, what are you gonna do then?
You know, I assume we would have, we would have to bring it back, but that's not anything in the foreseeable future. You know, help from the sheriff's department, I think, will be there. I don't know if Ronnie can answer that or not, but help from the sheriff's department will be there. We wouldn't require, that fifteen-passenger bus is just an additional expense to the county, and it seems to me like, you know, those who are wanting to cut some costs would be glad to get rid of that fifteen-passenger bus.
Well, I agree with cutting the costs, costs, but they're still getting the money for the P, and they're not gonna have to have it. And I understand what you're saying, you shouldn't take money from them, I fully understand that, but we're actually giving them more money for something they don't have to have.
We're not giving them any more money, Commissioner Gurrell, they're on the salary scale.
Commissioner DeWitt, when they went to training, it was set up for them to get extra money for getting the P. It didn't have nothing to do with the salary scale.
They're on the salary scale now.
Is any other discussion? Cast your vote.
Sixteen yes, three no, two abstain.
Next item on agenda is resolution four, by Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner, I understand.
Thank you. It is all resolution number five, by Commissioner DeWitt.
Same quote for him. To the Honorable Rick Riller Chairman and members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session, met this twenty-fifth day of November twenty nineteen. Resolution in reference appointment of internal committees for Hawkins County until September thirty of twenty twenty. Whereas, the following committees and attached members list are committees established or made optional by general law or private acts. The committees being presented by the county mayor must be confirmed by the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners. Airport budget, environmental parks, public safety audit, delinquent tax resale of land, agents, personnel, road, beer, education, industrial, public buildings, and solid waste. And the list is attached. Therefore, be resolved that the aforementioned committees and attached list of committee members be approved as the internal committees for Hawkins County until September thirty of twenty twenty. Chairman, I submit.
Motion by Commissioner DeWitt, second by Commissioner Barker. Is any discussion? If not, cast your vote.
Five yes, seven no, two abstain.
If we have three, you can vote. Next item is another reason, Mr. Phillips?
Approval of Nodder Pub, Mountain Line Sierra, Redmond, sixteen Rose Lane, Mount Bonneville, Tennessee. Business address one eight one, Don LaFrope Brakes, on Bonneville, Tennessee. Chairman, so what?
Second by Colson, Field Safety, Mr. Becker, is any discussion? Cast your vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion, Sheriff, and we...
All righty, that'll do it. Go ahead and sign off.